To paraphrase Shakespeare, lend us your ears, we'll pay you back with interest.
Everything you want to hear from the voice of Cerritos College, W P M D on the net, where people make a difference.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Falcon Spotlight. I'm your host, Rob J F, here at Cerritos College, W P M D radio, where people make a difference. At this time, I'd like my guests to please introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Aivek Castro. I'm councilwoman in the city of Lynnwood.
And tell me about your role that you have.
Well, as councilwoman for the city of Lynnwood, one of my main roles is to deal with the budget, allocate the funds accordingly to the different departments as needed, and obviously make sure that the city services are provided according to what the residents expect.
How long is a term?
Each term is four years, and we are able to serve a total of eight years, which is two terms.
Is there a difference between mayor and mayor pro temp? What's the difference with those two roles?
So, the mayor is the chair of the council, and they run the meetings. And the mayor pro temp is like the vice mayor, who basically is there for backup in the event that the mayor cannot attend a meeting or an event.
And both of them, how are they like picked?
So, in the city of Lynnwood, since we are a general law city, we do not elect our mayor. We rotate on a yearly basis. So, every year, after the, on the first meeting of December, Tuesdays, we reorganize, and the council itself nominates both a mayor and a vice mayor, and votes accordingly. And so, the mayor and mayor pro temp in a general law city is considered an honorary mayor and mayor pro temp, because they do not have any additional powers than the council members, other than they run the meeting and run the agenda to make sure that the agenda is posted accordingly.
Now, well, I'll knock out real quick the public service announcements, and then we'll be right back.
Okay.
Nothing better demonstrates an artist's ability to perform, to connect with his audience, than his work onstage. At the W P M D Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, we bring you Roadwork. A series of great concerts, start to finish, uninterrupted, from the greatest names in rock and roll. All from the W P M D archives, some haven't aired in years, some have never aired at all. And you have the best seat in the house, right in front of your speakers. Roadwork, throughout the week, on the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, on W P M D on the net, where people make a difference.
Parents sure have their hands full, and they can use an extra hand. Now, every state offers free and low health insurance. For your sports hero or budding artist, kids up to age nineteen can get checkups, doctor and dental visits, hospital care, prescriptions, and more. Your child may qualify based on your family size and income. It's one less thing to worry about. Call or go online for more information. Call 1-877-KIDS-NOW, 543-7669. Visit healthcare.gov to learn more about affordable health coverage for your family. A message from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services.
Today, my new dad threw a barbecue.
Today, my new son and I threw a barbecue.
There were burgers and chicken.
I burnt everything: the burgers, the chicken, the salad.
They were delicious.
They were awful.
And then, and then we had watermelon.
I'm allergic to watermelon.
And then we played catch.
I broke Mr. Lewis's window, Mrs. Wakeham's window, Mrs. Wakeham's windshield. And then, somehow, my hand, my hand!
And then my dad even let me drive his car.
The hospital's on the right! It was a rough day.
It was a great day.
You don't have to be perfect to be a perfect parent. Thousands of kids in foster care will take you just as you are. For more information on how you can adopt, visit AdoptUSKids.org. A public service announcement from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, AdoptUSKids, and the Ad Council.
Welcome back to the Falcon Spotlight. I'm your host, Rob J F, here at W P M D Studios, located in Norwalk, California. And I'm back with my guests. I was wondering, aside from city council, there are also other things that, well, speaking of city council, I know that, like, on the agenda, there's this thing called successor agency. Can you explain what that is?
Yes, as a city council member, we serve on different type, what you call, boards. So, for example, what before used to be called the redevelopment agency is now called the successor agency, because it's been dissolved by the state governor. So, we'll start the regular council agenda, and then transition into the successor agency, sometimes the finance authority and/or housing authorities, depending on what is required for that day's agenda.
Now, aside from city council, there's also commissions. Can you explain what are commissions and how they work?
Yes, commissions are basically advisory committees to the city council. So, certain members of the community will be appointed to serve, whether it's on the planning commission, the community block grants commission, or traffic and safety. And they're just basically regular residents that review some of the information and make recommendations to the city council.
Okay, and their terms are...
The commissions, do they serve terms? Their terms are the same as the council member who appointed them.
So, being that, you know, you've reached the point in which you're already, you know, representing the city in city council, tell me your story. Tell me, tell me from the beginning, you know, how was school like? Were you active in leadership? Did you, like, right away know you wanted to get into that? What kind of jobs led up to that?
That's a difficult question, because I always knew I liked politics, but my jobs in the past never truly were anything that transitioned into politics. Politics does not require any specific type of background. All it really requires is a passion and a want to better your community. I have a real estate background, and through my real estate background, I did a lot of networking and met a lot of people. But I started my career in politics, helping others run for certain positions. And in one of those, I helped out one of my cousins, and he won. And he appointed me to my first commission, and then from there, I just kind of went on.
So, did you have any other jobs before that, or...?
Before working in the real estate industry, I did customer service and retail. So, again, it doesn't really require anything specifically. It's more of a passion that you might have to better your community.
Excellent. What kind of volunteer, like, stuff, like, what's a good starter for people? Like, if they just want to get their foot in the door to, like...
The first thing I would recommend is people to attend their local council meetings, get to know the local elected officials. But again, you could do that through many different avenues, whether it's volunteering with nonprofit organizations, your local youth groups. So, it doesn't really, there's no real formula to it. But obviously, if you want to one day become an elected yourself, the best route is probably to volunteer in someone's campaign, so that you can see what it is that they go through to get elected.
Now, for, when does the election usually come around for Lynnwood? Like, when do, like, the council positions, like, open at each time that they have to keep running?
Well, it depends on the type of city that you're in, whether you're a charter city or a general law city. In the city of Lynnwood, we have elections every two years. In the first Tuesday of November, and in one term, it's two seats open, and in the next one, it's three seats open, and they alternate from there.
And is there, is there one coming up yet, or...?
Yes, this November, there's an election where two seats at large are open.
And the election is just like one day, or...?
It's just, well, yeah, you can only vote that one day, but most people start campaigning months in advance.
Okay, so, this year, you know, here at Cerritos College, you know, students have a chance to run for student body president once a year. It's in the spring, because towards the end, already now with the academic year. So, for these individuals who, these students are trying to run, what is the key to, like, a good campaign? What should you not do, and what's good to do for, like, a campaign?
It depends on what the issues are. If you're going to run for any type of leadership position, you should understand what the issues are. So, obviously, communicating with your peers and understanding their needs and wants are going to make it easier for you to campaign. But you must have a platform. You must be able to say what, where you stand on the issue. So, a lot of it requires networking, communicating, socializing, and again, just being aware of what the issues are, what's important, finding an issue that is important to you, that you show passion on. And, you know, most people make the mistake of just pointing out mistakes, but offer no solutions. So, if you want to run a positive campaign, once you identify an issue, make sure that you can also identify a solution.
When is the next council meeting?
The next council meeting in the city of Lynnwood is April 7th at 6:00 P. M. And we host our council meetings every first and third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 P. M.
Also, you guys have, like, a great system where you can access, like, the public records and stuff, like, go to the website.
It's my DocSpot. Yes, so, anybody who wants to, who doesn't have time to attend the city council meetings is more than welcome to go on www.lynnwood.ca.us. Our agendas are posted seventy-two hours in advance, and you're able to see the issues, as well as the staff recommendations behind them.
When does a agenda have to go up for the next meeting?
Per the Brown Act regulations, they must be up seventy-two hours in advance, for the public's view.
I'm actually going to knock out the next public service announcement, so that we can continue this interview.
Okay.
Okay, we'll be right back.
People don't much listen to the radio on the radio anymore. They listen on their desktops, they listen on their laptops, they listen on their tablets, and mostly, they listen on their cell phones. You can hear W P M D on great streaming sites like TuneIn and Streama and Radio Shaker. And now, you can listen to the place where people make a difference, on our new W P M D app. It's free and ready for you to download. Just go to appcatch.com, that's A.P.P.C.A.T.C.H. dot com. Search for W P M D, then hit launch, and you're with us. It'll work on your iPhone, your Android, your BlackBerry, your iPad. You can take W P M D with you wherever you go, whenever you go. The W P M D app, one more reason why W P M D on the net is the place where people make a difference.
America's public school teachers equip our youngsters with many skills. They teach students to read and do math. They teach children history and science. They help them learn how to solve problems, resolve conflicts, and cooperate with each other. Teachers care about how and what their students learn. Teachers want all of them to succeed. Just like you, their parents and community members, please, come into our classrooms and see how we are fulfilling America's promise by making great public schools for every child. A message from the National Education Association and W P M D on the net.
It's Thursday night, and you're grabbing drinks with some friends. Start it off with a pitcher for the table, which quickly becomes two. There's pool. And there's the photo booth.
All right, everybody squeeze in. Say cheese!
Followed naturally by an order of wings, and another.
Can we get some extra ranch sauce?
Then there's the ceremonial nightcap.
So, what are we doing this weekend?
And lastly, it's back to the car, which, if you're buzzed... Could be the most expensive night of your life. Getting pulled over for buzzed driving could cost you around $10,000 in fines, legal fees, and increased insurance rates. Nothing kills a buzz like getting pulled over for buzzed driving, because buzzed driving is drunk driving. Brought to you by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Ad Council.
Welcome back to the Falcon Spotlight. I'm your host, Rob J F, here at W P M D Studios, located in Norwalk, California, and I'm back here with my guests. So, tell me about, like, the events, you know, in Lynnwood. What do we have throughout the year?
We have a variety of different events. We normally honor the national holidays, such as obviously Christmas, Easter, the Fourth of July. Periodically, we do different community cleanup events. One that will be done this March 28th at 9:00 A. M. at Lynnwood City Park. It will be a community cleanup in honor of Caesar Chavez. And then, on March 31st, also at 9:00 A. M. at Lynnwood Park, there will be a ceremony honoring Caesar Chavez. But it just depends on what's going on throughout the year, what the residents are asking for. A lot of our events are held at Plaza Mexico. They tend to be a little bit more cultural. And in the senior center, again, different types of events that are done to socialize and celebrate within the senior center.
Tell me about the Christmas parade.
The Christmas parade is an annual celebration. The idea is to get families to come out on a Friday night. It's normally done the first Friday of December. We call it the Candy Cane Lane Parade. It starts on Martin Luther King and Atlantic, and ends on Bullis and Martin Luther King. It's about a one-mile parade route. And every year, we have different ground marshals, and the families love to come out, set up their lawn chairs along the route, enjoy the floats, or whatever parade participants are. And they have a good time.
So, I know that sometimes, you know, to, another good thing of getting involved with the community sometimes is, like, organizations. Can you tell me about, like, the stuff you participate in?
There's different types of organizations, but it just really, again, depends on what your passion is. So, there's no particular organization that you need to be a part of to get involved. Me personally, I was very much involved with Lynnwood Athletics Community Services, which was a pop Warner program that did football and cheer for kids from the age of five through fourteen. They offered after-school tutoring, and after the age of fourteen, they transitioned into the high school programs. So, it was a little different, but it was fun, and I enjoyed doing it with my children.
I know that sometimes here for school, like, sometimes students can can stress out when they're balancing sometimes work and school, or they have responsibilities that they have to take care of. What's a good thing for, like, time management and stuff?
Well, when you have a lot on your plate and you want to manage your time accordingly, the best thing to do is make sure you keep a good calendar. Make sure you give yourself time in between your appointments or your responsibilities, so that you're not rushing. Whenever you have the opportunity to advance on something, advance on it, do not procrastinate. Don't leave it till the last minute. And if you feel yourself being overwhelmed and chest and sore, you're doing too much, and that's a problem, and you need to delete some of the activities. Sometimes, we confuse some of our leisure activities with responsibilities, and that's when you need to analyze your own personal situation and remove yourself, so that you don't over-stress, and that you're able to focus accordingly on your priorities, which, in this case, if you're working, it should be, and you're going to school, it should be those two things, and everything else should kind of fall behind.
So, aside from, from, like, city council meetings, like, do you guys have to, like, attend any other meetings, or...?
The only responsibilities that we have as elected are to attend the council meetings. Attending community events are optional, and you should attend them whenever possible. But the only real responsibility you have is to attend the council meetings.
Oh, well, so, typically, like, when you do, you know, have free time, like, what do you enjoy doing on your free time? I know that some people, like, they don't, like, they don't... Like, it's great to, you know, to get to know, like, your community leaders and so forth. Like, you know, you imagine they're, like, super busy, but what do you enjoy doing, like, on your free time?
Well, in my case, I'm a part-time elected official, so I do have a full-time job. So, when I'm not working or dealing with city politics, I pretty much dedicate my time with my family. I have four children, so most of my free time, I try to just spend quality time with them. My idea of a good time is just staying home and vegetating. I do not want to socialize. I don't want to talk to people. I just want to relax in the comfort of my home with my family, because with work and politics, that's all I do. So, that's the last thing I want to do on my time off.
No, I know, one of the things here at school, I guess most of us, we all deal with it. Mathematics is probably, like, the hardest part of education. Did you have, like, a subject that you didn't like? Like, how do you, you know, get through it?
I didn't necessarily have a subject that I did not like. I had subjects that I had a hard time with, and that was statistics. I passed it luckily, but it wasn't with the best grade. All that mattered was that I passed it.
What was your favorite?
My favorite was probably English. It really helped develop my writing skills.
What's a good way for someone to be more outspoken? For people when they're shy and stuff, what are good things that people can try, so that they can, you know, get used to it, because sometimes people have to be, get used to public speaking?
Find a topic that you're passionate about. When you like what you're talking about, it's easy. And I find that most people are, it's not that they're shy, they might just be intimidated. So, if you have to do any type of public speaking, make sure you find a way to include your passion in it. And don't think about it as if you're speaking in public. Think about it as if you're having a conversation with someone, and you're just basically explaining to that person what you like about your passion, or what moves you, or what gears you towards it. And just be as detailed as possible, because at the end of the day, whomever you're speaking to doesn't have the same understanding of the topic as you do, so be very detailed. A lot of people make the mistake of being very limited with the information that they provide when they're speaking, and they don't engage. So, as an individual, you should know what you want to hear when someone's speaking to you. So, try to do the same, you know, not to be too long-winded, get straight into the point, but make sure that you include as many details.
Excellent. How about, I know, I know we had briefly talked about, like, a good campaign. How about, like, when someone's, like, applying for a job? I know that sometimes, you know, coming straight out of high school and stuff, like, some people don't get discouraged from, like, rejections when they try to apply to, like, jobs. What's a good way to try to take on a job that you want to go for?
If you're applying for a specific position at a company, make sure you research the company. Make sure you research their pros and their cons. Try as much as possible to talk to some of the current employees, so that as you're preparing for the interview, you have an understanding of what the company offers. And, you know, one of the main questions asked during an interview is, what do you think you can bring positively to this organization? So, because you're familiar with the organization, it'll be easier for you to answer. So, that's, that's, that's an easy tip to follow.
So, do you think students, like, I know that some people, like, they don't take the time to watch the news and stuff, to keep up with current events. You know, is there, like, importance that people should, like, you know, I know that sometimes we, like, you know, teens and people still barely coming out of high school, like, they just care about, like, watching TV and stuff. But what are the benefits of, like, seeking higher education and just being aware of things?
Well, it depends on the individual. I mean, you can tell someone to try to be aware of their current affairs as much as possible. But if they don't have an interest in it, it's just going to go in one ear and go out the other. But I think thankfully, thanks to social media, a lot of that is changing, because as people are, you know, scrolling through their Facebook or whatever social media account they might have, a lot of that is now readily available, and the way it's pitched, it makes it a little bit more interesting. So, I think that's a little different nowadays with technology. In reference to higher education, obviously, the more aware you are of what's going on going on in your surroundings and current affairs, the more problem-solving skills you might develop and critical thinking skills that should be able to transition into, you know, a good job. So, hopefully, that should be more than enough of a motivator to want to seek higher education, whether it's through a normal educating institute, or whether it's self-taught through reading, or, you know, self-improvement workshops.
So, I noticed also, you know, the, like, our city website, it has, like, a, like, a nice tutorial that people can check out, like, I get briefly mentioned, see, like, department kind of, the videos. Is there anything... What's something that people should check out, that they don't, if they don't know Lynnwood?
I mean, obviously, just visit the website, and if they want to know what are the main issues, is just review the agenda. If you cannot attend, all the information's on there. And every agenda has the minutes of the prior meeting, so to let you know what the outcome was, what were the concerns, and what the main issues are, as well as how the council voted in the prior meeting. So, if anything, visit that and the calendar of events, so that you're aware of what events are available throughout the year.
So, there's a parade in the year, and anything else that's...
The Fourth of July celebration.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, we're still one of the cities that still celebrates Fourth of July at night. We have a fireworks show, and throughout the day, people start setting up their tents or their barbecues, and they spend the day with their family, and at night, once the sun goes down, the fireworks start.
And the Caesar Chavez event, it's, it's been around, this is freshly new, right?
Yeah, this is a fairly new event. Again, as different, as the community is changing, the request of the types of events that are celebrated are changing. And this year, a group of community residents decided that they wanted to honor Caesar Chavez. So, as a municipality, we don't really stress anything specific, other than the Christmas parade and the Fourth of July, as well as our veterans event. But any other additional events are normally put together by community organizations, based on their needs and desires.
Now, for people who haven't been to, like, official meeting and stuff like that, like, I know that you had mentioned the Brown Act and stuff. uh the Brown Act and stuff, um yeah, can you explain like, you know, like I think like here for student government, we have also, I think, uh parliamentary procedures?
So um the Brown Act is basically uh an act that was enacted to ensure that there's transparency and that it gives members of the public plenty of time to know what their city council is meeting about. So that it just means that we have to post the agenda seventy-two hours in advance and that everything has to be done in a transparent, public way. Um as for how we run the meetings, we use a combination of parliamentary uh procedure as well as Robert's Rules of Order and we establish rules of decorum. Um but the style can be changed uh accordingly depending on who is chairing the meeting. So since mayors do change yearly, um the style might change, but the normal procedures as parliamentary as well as Robert Rules of Order are normally followed.
Uh can you explain what's quorum?
The quorum means that you must have enough individuals um on the dais to vote. So for example, in the city of Lynwood, since we have five members, we require at least three members present to be able to um have quorum and move forward with the meeting. So in other words, you must have um in addition, so if there's there's five, three is the majority and three is considered the majority, but you need at least three for a quorum. In case the vote splits, there the there's a deciding vote at all times.
And the meetings, uh they always start at six, correct?
They start at six o'clock, sometimes we're a little late, but only a few minutes late, but yes, they start at six.
Um and also, one of the unique things too is like people can also access like audio, like um that's also on.
Yes, the meetings are recorded and um you can always go to the city clerk's office and request a copy of the audio.
So uh also, you know, in in Lynwood, like we have um, well, I I guess every high school, you know, they have a like a requirement for graduation, it's a you know, community service. Uh I I know we had the uh the recreation department here as well. Uh we have a variety of uh unique programs that uh people can can join uh in Lynwood. Is um is there any volunteering stuff like in the city also, like let's take for example the um Fourth of July or anything like that?
Yes, members of the community are able to volunteer, however, they must be at least sixteen years of age and must go through the human resource department and pass a background check um to be able to volunteer accordingly. Um there is uh several community cleanups uh throughout the year and for that, you just need to show up.
Now, the the year goes by so quickly, I can't believe like spring break just went right away and like time flies by so fast. It just feels like it's going by quickly.
Hmm, yes.
Um so after um like the city council, like do you guys uh get to like interact also with like other uh um officials and stuff like that like?
Yes, um we tend to interact with other elected officials, whether it's higher elected or um just members of other city councils. Um whether it's at a conference or just different events, so yeah, we we tend to socialize a lot with each other and try to exchange ideas.
So when, oh yeah, um so tell me about the the kid mayor.
The kid mayor is a program that was established by our new mayor, Mayor Solache. Um and every, we have twelve elementary schools in the city of Lynwood. So every month, uh we are choosing a new mayor, um kid mayor from each elementary school that will represent us for that one month. And they um run the first five minutes of the meeting, they open it up and they accompany the mayor to all the events that are going on in the city that month.
Now, I I think the the cool thing also is, you know, like each of you get to present like an item to the the kid mayor as they are appointed, can you tell me about those things?
Um yes, the uh kid mayor is presented with a city pin, a city plaque, um a name badge, a scholarship and a proclamation. So every year, I mean, every month, we we present them with these items on the dais.
So the pin, can you explain the pin?
The city pin is basically the city logo and it can come either in color, gold or s- uh silver. And it's just basically the logo of the city so that when they're in public, it's some type of recognition.
Now, we are, let me double check, yeah, we're down to our last like minute or two. Um I I wanna thank you for your time, I was wondering if you have any closing statement, any any um tips for people that wanna, you know, be a leader in the future or anything like that?
Um thank you for inviting me, as for tips, um all I could say is that there's a saying that if you want something done right, do it yourself. Um and one of the reasons sometimes as a nation we suffer is because we are too apathetic and we do not get involved. So if you wanna see change in your community, get up and be the change.
Thank you so much for your time and this concludes the Falcon Spotlight, tune in every Tuesday at two P M here on W P M D where people make a difference.